It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, County of Starr, Monday, January the fourteenth. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. I'd like to thank everyone for being here this morning. If anyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America, entered by and for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
The first item is minutes. I think y'all have before you.
Motion.
Motion second to approve them. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is claims.
Judge, can you skip down until Mr. Carter?
Mr. Carter's coming? Okay, we're good. Okay. Is there anyone that needs to come before the court that's from out of town? I don't see anyone. If not, we'll go ahead and go down our agenda. First reported is Starr County Gas. Mr. Alvarez.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. My report is concerning December, the last month of 2018. It's before you on your agenda or your package. The only part I'd like to elaborate on is the second part about the Railroad Commission The Railroad Commission has decided to really clamp down on our audits, and there's some components of the system that have never been audited, or at least not in the last ten years that I've been here. Excuse me. And they're coming up with new rules, and they're coming up with new ways that they want to do things. Well, I've got two components, drug and alcohol, and operators qualifications, that they have already warned me are completely outdated. The one up the top of my mind right now, and it's due for audit on February the twelfth, is operators' qualification. To bring that operators' qualification plan up to date, it cost us, Raina and I have discussed it, it cost us about fifty, three hundred dollars before August the twelfth. I don't know if we're going to be finding the money because we are a little bit tight on everything. So I just wanted to bring it to the attention because it's not only going to be this component that's going to face this problem, it's going to be almost all of them. So, Raina has something to say about it.
Okay. Is this a training, or what is it?
It's actually a class that they need to take in order to bring...
No, no.
Okay, go ahead.
Operators' qualification is the classes that my staff has to take.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but the plan, the plan itself is the one that's outdated. And the classes, we've taken them. There's a couple of them that need to be taken. I've got all of mine, but there's a couple of them that my staff needs to take. But the plan is a required thing by the Railroad Commission. That is the one that in itself costs five thousand dollars, or forty something.
Yeah, and the reason I came up to the stand is because about a month and so ago, do you remember, Judge, when we had those classes also for other areas that needed to be covered? And it was a pretty hefty amount of maybe six thousand dollars. And now, Chema tells me that Railroad Commission is expecting these new classes to come about, and it's another five thousand and some odd dollars to have them.
I guess my concern is, you say it's been like this for ten years, and the audit never showed it. Why didn't it show in the audit?
According to Chema, Railroad Commission just brought him this surprise, and...
Yeah, last year, they started auditing, like detail, detail auditing. And they're giving us a chance to catch up. They're not being strict right now. They didn't have to advise me that they're coming to audit for these next two audits, but they called me on, for the first day of January, the first day we came back. They called me that on the twenty-second, they're coming to do the O and M Operator Manual. That component, I have no problem with because we deal with it every day. They audit it every day, so that component is pretty much cut up. I'm pretty sure we'll do good on that one. The operators' qualification, we've never been, we've never been auditing on it. It's never been, it's never been covered. And I think I saw a date that it was done, it was 2004. That was the last time that it was updated.
My only issue here, Judge, is the amount of money that is going to be spent on that additional, on those additional classes that are not in the budget.
How much is it?
Five thousand, three hundred dollars more.
Can you cover from the revenues from the gas? I need to check.
You have to make an amendment.
Yeah, I need to check. You know, one thing that I would like to see is instead of us sending people to get trained, if it's more than two or three, it might be cheaper to bring the instructor down and teach them here.
Well, they are coming.
Okay, so that's the price of them coming. And getting all our employees that need to be qualified, qualifying. Because if we need to send one at a time, it's going to kill us. You know, the finances will kill us.
Judge, Raina says the classes, and she's right, we do have three of my staff members that are lacking, I think, three classes apiece. And the instructor comes to town, or comes to our office. We have a classroom set up and everything. But the bigger problem is the evaluation of this staff. It has to be done, this is a major change that the Railroad Commission did, it has to be done by a master evaluator, which we don't have anybody around here except for Gasty. And that's where the problem comes in. If I could do it, I offered for me to do it since I've got all my qualifications, but the state won't accept mine. It has to be an independent, it has to be an independent party to come and do the master, what they call master evaluation. And that's, that and the plan, it's not classes, it's really not classes. It's that and the plan that's really...
Okay, now, the plan and the evaluator, those are two different things? Or is it the same?
They go hand in hand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the plan, the old plan didn't call for evaluators. The new plan does, or should.
And I guess what makes it more difficult, Judge, is that, I told him, can't we get quotes, to get something cheaper, not as expensive as, he said, but it has to be a master evaluator that gives this training classes? And apparently, that's the only person that can give us this training.
If we need to get it, we need to get it. You know, there's no sidestepping that. But maybe you two and Mr. Carter and myself can get together and see our finances and where we need to come up with that money.
Any questions?
Let me ask you something. Apparently, there was a leak, a gas leak somewhere up there, called to portal tires somewhere there.
All weekend. All weekend. We haven't slept.
Well, I got, I got, I want to tell you what, I'm telling you, I got a call, lady kind of pissed off, I said, where would you call to fix that? But it's not, we don't do that. But I didn't know your numbers, so I gave out your number, Raina. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and they did call me. I got calls from...
They called you, because, I mean, we were not in charge of it. Apparently, they were afraid that something would explode or something.
We should have a number that they can call 24/7.
Yes, Judge, and that number had been disconnected last week. It just so happened. Treasurer's Office had sent out the check, and that check got lost. Mr. Gonzalez, I know you're aware that there was a stop payment on that check that got lost, and a new one was issued. But what happened is Treasurer's Office mailed it instead of giving it to me, so I could go pay it right away. So it's in the mail. So what I did Saturday, Judge, I went into the office, and I paid for it, and I'll just, you know, get a claim and get it reimbursed. But I needed that number reconnected, and I got, I took care of it immediately.
Okay.
I gave you your number, because I didn't know Mr. Alvarez's number.
Yes, there was a big leak during the weekend. Chema, you want to elaborate real quick on that?
No, there was not one. There was, right now, there's about thirty going on. We're already on them. But there was one persistent customer that kept calling, and that's why we worked all night.
Thirty, you got thirty?
Oh, yeah, at least, yeah.
They were, they were pretty pissed off. I don't take care of that.
We're in the process of converting all these colonias into poly. And the DEMP plan caused for us to replace seven thousand, five hundred feet a year. And that's going to cost money. The DEMP is also something new. The old lines, the PVC and iron have to go. The iron has been taken care of, the bid has already been received, it's going to be done. But the PVC, we have to, we have like, I don't know, maybe fifty miles of PVC.
Fifty?
Yeah, and we have to replace seventy to five hundred feet every year.
Yeah, that's in the budget. That money's in the budget, so that shouldn't be a problem.
And that's the reason for all those leaks. These are all very old lines, Commissioner.
I'm just referring to, I said that I gave out your number because they were, who would I call? Called the system, I don't know what number would you call, I said, but I said, call Raina, and I gave her the number.
We need to make that number public, you know, everyone needs to know that number.
Yeah, it is public, Judge. It is public. It just so happened that...
Well, the Commissioner didn't know it, so it's not too public.
I didn't even know there was an emergency number to call, and the people say, well, you should know. I said, I don't have that department.
Any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Transfer station, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. You have my report in the desk. At this time, I'm glad and happy to inform that this past week, we did get the grant contract delivered and delivered, and I think Judge signed it on the night.
Yeah, that's for the tire cutter?
Yes, for the tire cutter. So today, after this meeting, we're going to contact them and see how fast they can get it done. Which is, by next meeting, which would be? Thirty-six thousand, two hundred and forty.
Yeah, it's mid to high thirties, Commissioner. I don't remember the number, but...
I'd like to see it because, you know...
Oh, definitely, yeah. Tonight, we can, tonight, we can, I'll let you guys know, I mean, I'll inform you, I'll personally inform you once they ship it, so you'll know when they get here and you can go buy.
I might want to upgrade, upgrade mine and put in a doctor to the one I've got to do the same job that we'll do.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully.
No, I think, I think he can. I mean, he made you that tire cutter is a lot better than ours and probably a lot cheaper.
The one I got, I think I can get an attachment to do that same job, hopefully.
Yes, sir. Yeah, tonight, we get it in, I mean, I'll inform the Commissioner, and hopefully, y'all can go buy and get it. Other than that, everything is normal operation.
Between the four Commissioners, we take about four thousand dollars of trash per month, most of the month?
Yes, sir. I don't matter.
Sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less.
This time, we had to expend it for hold and new asset power equipment for the skid loader, so those expenses were, you know, I mean, don't happen every month. We spend like three thousand dollars on those repairs.
No, what I'm saying, Commissioner, is that between the four Commissioners, we take about four thousand dollars a month of trash, and they got to pay for it to get it dumped over there, so we're getting a free ride.
It comes out of our budget.
Well, it just takes more money, service to the community, and you don't get a free ride. They're paying taxes for it.
It's a service that we give to the community.
So there's no free ride.
Yeah. Much like the JP offices in the smaller areas, you know, it's not cost effective, but...
What I'm saying, Commissioner, is that, I'm trying to make a point, when they need help, no more prescription one, prescription four, it's a service that you have to go to the right to say, who stays over. That's the point, that's the point I was trying to make, but I thought you would pick up on the hint.
And who's going to try it?
I thought you would pick up on the hint quickly, but you're getting slow with age.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Tax assessor?
Good morning, Commissioners. You have my report in front of you? The total county watch collections for December 2018 were two million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ninety-three and twenty-eight cents. In December 2017, there were two million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one and forty-seven cents. There was a total collection of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and one and eighty-one cents, more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight and eighty-eight cents, more than last year. Our total current collections for Starr County, for Starr County entities, were one million, one million, two hundred, fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars with seven cents. Current collections in December 2017 were one million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five with fifty-two cents. There was a total collections of eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty-five and twenty-five cents, more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected one hundred and seventy-four thousand, sixty-nine and sixty-six cents, more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for December 2018, just for Starr County, were two hundred five thousand, five thousand and nine hundred and seventy, seventy-nine and seventy-nine cents. Total delinquent collections in December 2017 were one hundred, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred, twenty-eight and thirty cents. There was a total delinquent collection of sixty, sixty thou, six thousand, I'm sorry, six hundred and fifty-one with forty-one, forty-nine cents, more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty, seventy-eight cents, more than last year. As of December 31st, the tax office has collected sixty percent of the projected collections. Projected collections remaining are five million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five cents. You have my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
County clerk, Mr. Gonzalez?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The report you have in front of you, it's for December, from December through December 31st of last year. The vital preservation fee, a hundred and twenty-one dollars was collected. Records management, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine. Copies, two thousand, forty-three, thirty. Records archive fee, four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five. Marriage licenses filed, thirty-one, one thousand, one hundred and fifty. Birth files, eighty-four of them, for a hundred and sixty-two dollars. County clerk filings, four hundred and sixty-seven, for eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And courthouse security, for four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Total due to the treasurer for the month of December was twenty-four thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and five cents. Just to kind of let you guys know, Commissioners and Judge, I just started, this is my first month in here, and I'm excited. I want to thank the Commissioners and Judge for giving me the opportunity to be here with you guys and to go forward, and I'm excited because I know Judge and the Commissioners had, were very instrumental on getting a lot of the things that we have now online. I'm sure the public knows, and we're slowly getting them to understand that they can actually go onto the Starr County website and click on the property searches where they can actually look at stuff rather than coming in physically. As far as they wanting to make copies, they can do that, and there is a site that will take them to where they can pay it online. Or if they want to print it, it's going to come out a little bit distorted, but if they want to do it online, totally online, that's allowable. Of course, this is from 1984 on. We're also working on the preservation of, I think, the books from A through Z that, Judge, you were instrumental on with Dennis, on getting this done, and I will be meeting with them tomorrow to kind of see where we're going. As far as that, you know, we're continuing to progress and getting better. Obviously, that office has done a tremendous job these past years, and we can only, you know, continue to do a better job with that.
Yeah. Mr. Gonzalez, and thank you so much. Also, anything that we can do, I know I speak for the Commissioners and myself, anything we can do to help you to get that office better, just let us know.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Report for projected revenues for December 2018. The total revenue for December is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars, fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four from Idauq County Sheriff's Office, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, I mean, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-four from the market services. The count for January the eighth on federal inmates was a hundred and twenty-four, and the count for Idauq County inmates is thirty-four, and our local inmates is eighty-eight. Total count is two hundred and forty-six. On the back page, we put the percentages that, where we're at as collected right now, what's expected of the Starr County Detention Center. We're currently collecting at twenty-eight point fifty-one percent. So that puts us at seven hundred and thirty, seven hundred, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and six, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars collected. And that is an increase of fifty-one thousand, nine hundred, I'm, five hundred and seventy, ninety-seven dollars more from last year.
Where did you put that?
On the back page. You want to have one page?
Mine doesn't have. See, not getting the deal.
So the percentages are there, Judge.
Yeah, I thought that was it, you know, when I went to see, that's a record-breaking number, the two fifty-five.
Yes, yes, it is. Yes, it is. The numbers are there from last year, and as you can see, there's still a steady increase month by month.
That's great.
Good management.
Effective management.
Thank you, Your Honor. Keep up the good work. International Bridge?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Okay, the report you have in front of you is for the month of December 2018. We show a decrease of eight thousand, eight hundred and four for the month of December 2018 compared to the month of December 2017. We show an increase of twenty thousand, eight seventy-six with fifty cents on collections for the month of December 2018 compared to the month of November 2018. Rent receipts, we have five hundred dollars. Currency exchange excess, a hundred and forty-four with thirty-two cents. Border Patrol deported aliens, that's at zero. Total ladder collections, six hundred and forty-four with thirty-two cents. Total traffic collections was two hundred and thirty with four hundred and thirteen with fifty cents. Grand total collections for the month of December 2018 was two hundred and thirty-one thousand, fifty cents with eighty-two cents. And that's the report for the month of December 2018. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Treasurer, Mr. Gonzalez?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. This is my report. Bear with me, this is my first report, so also...
Do you have a handout, Mr. Gonzalez?
Did you get a handout? It's for, it's for the month of, it's two months, it's for the month of November and the month of December. We try to bring it up to date, so we should be up to date. If you notice, also, this is a shorter report versus the one you were used to receiving in the past. But of course, if you want me to add more information, I'll be glad to do that. You have one, Judge?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to start off with the month of November. The ending balance for November 30th on the general fund was three million, seven hundred and six thousand, one forty-eight with nineteen cents. The road and bridge, the ending balance was one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, thirty-two with twenty-eight cents. The enterprise funds, those have a, an ending balance of four hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine seventeen with ninety-five cents. And the drainage district has an ending balance of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight with seventy cents for a grand total for the, ending the month of November 30th, 2018, of six million, one ninety, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand with twelve cents. Moving on to December, ending December 31st, 2018, we have an ending balance for the general fund of two million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seventy with twenty cents. The road and bridge, we have an ending balance of one million, sixty-eight, four hundred and ten with seventy cents. For the enterprise funds, we have an ending balance of five hundred and forty-nine thousand, three eleven with eighty-five cents. And the drainage district, we have an ending balance of eight hundred and three thousand, three forty-three with ninety-six cents, bringing the grand total for December the 31st, 2018, to five million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one thirty-six with seventy-one cents. So, are there any questions? As I said a while ago, I know it's a brief report, but if you want me to add something to it, by all means, I'm at the pleasure of the Commissioners' Court.
I think that's just perfect. All we need to do is how much money we have, that's it.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Carter, auditor?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I believe you have a copy of my monthly auditor's report for the month of December 2018. The cash reconciliation report as of December the 13th, December the 31st, shows the general fund cash available of two million, five hundred, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, twenty-two cents. The road and bridge fund cash available of one million, two thousand, six eighty-three point thirty-four. And the payroll clearing fund cash available of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. The summary of the expenditure reports are there in the middle of page one. The general fund as a whole has expended twenty-four point seventy-five percent of its budget for the year. And then, within the general fund are the following departments. The county judge has expended twenty-one point oh seven percent. The county clerk expended twenty-four point eighty-four percent. The personnel department expended twenty-three point sixty-four percent. The planning department is at twenty-three point thirty-two percent. The federal and state programs department is at twenty-three point sixty-eight percent. Let me turn the page here. The countywide general fund is at twenty-five percent even. The county court at law is at twenty-two point two nine percent. The 229th District Court is at twenty point seventy-seven percent. The 381st District Court is at twenty-one point twenty-six percent. The district clerk is at twenty-two point forty-seven percent. The county attorney is at twenty-seven point four six percent. The district attorney is at twenty point nine percent. The elections administrator is at fifty-four point fifty-one percent. The county auditor is at twenty-three point oh nine percent. The county treasurer is at twenty-three point nine five percent. The tax assessor collector is at twenty-two point fourteen percent. The building maintenance department is at twenty-one point eighty-seven percent. The detention center is at twenty-seven point fifty-seven percent. The juvenile detention center is at twenty-one point seven percent. The sheriff's department is at twenty-three point seventy-nine percent. The agriculture extension service is at twenty-one percent even. Fire station for precinct two is at twenty-seven point seven four. Fire station for precinct four is at twenty-eight point six percent. And the nutrition program for precinct four is at thirty-six point seventy-one percent. The road and bridge fund as a whole has expended twenty-three point forty-four percent of its budget. And then, within the road and bridge fund, our precinct number one has expended twenty-nine point four three percent. Precinct number two has expended twenty-eight point two eight percent. Precinct number three has expended twenty-seven point fifty-seven percent. And precinct number four is at twenty-two point five one percent. The countywide road and bridge fund has expended twelve point six seven percent. The summary of the revenue report on page three, in the general... In the general fund, the current taxes received are at fifty point three percent. Delinquent taxes are at fifteen point four-nine percent. Nutrition program grant has received twenty-three point two-eight percent. The indigent defense grant has not received anything this year. The nine-one-one services grant has not received anything this year. Fees of office collected are at twenty-three point five-five percent of its budgeted amount. The detention center is at seven point five-four percent. The state salary supplements are at forty-five point four-nine percent. International bridge transfers into the general fund are at eleven point seven-seven percent. Gas system transfers, transfer station transfers are at, are at zero. There's been no outside financing obtained, it's zero. Building permits are at twenty-five point oh-three percent. The payment in lieu of taxes from the wind farms is at zero. And the general fund as a whole is at thirty-three point five-one percent. In the road and bridge fund, current taxes received are fifty point two-three percent of the budgeted amount. Delinquent taxes are at fifteen point six percent. Motor vehicle licenses are at zero. Fines and forfeitures are at fifteen point forty-five percent. Vehicle weight fees are at sixty-six point three-six percent. Payment in lieu of taxes from the wind farms are at, are at, there should be a zero there instead of a hundred. That's a typographical error, please pardon the mistake there. Auction proceeds are at zero, and the road and bridge fund total is at thirty-nine point five-nine percent. The international bridge has received sixteen point two-five percent of its projected bridge tolls, eight point three-three percent of the rent from Hueta. And the total bridge revenue is at fifteen point ninety-four percent. And the percent expended is twenty-three point three-three percent. You can see there that the year-to-date amount for the international bridge has received four hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and it has expended six hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. In the gas operating system, the year-to-date revenue received is a hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, and the percent, and the amount expended is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, one seventy-two. And then the solid waste transfer station, the amount income received year-to-date is two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred, one hundred and eighty-seven, and the expenditures total three hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Mr. Carter, would the reason for that be that what has come in is a month behind, in other words, we're always billing a month behind? So the revenues would show, would be missing a month for the, for the enterprise funds?
For, for any or all departments, or are you referring...
For either the, the bridge, the gas, or the solid waste? You know, we're spending more than has come in. But, but, I'm trying to get some logic to it. The reason is that what has come in, we're a month behind on our billing. Is that correct?
I, I have to admit, I'm, I'm not familiar with that. I really don't know at this point what the details are. Of course, there's, you know, there's always a time lag between what happens in the field. And then it goes, it has to go from the department through the treasurer's office, and from the treasurer's office, it gets to, to the auditor's office. So there's, there's several steps in there, and there could be, there could be a time lag or a delay in any of those.
Well, I guess what my thinking is, for, say the gas. We bill your consumption of December, we bill it in January. So that doesn't come in till the end of January, beginning of February. So I'm imagining that that's a reason it shows, and this is just for public information, that we're spending more than we're receiving, but it's not necessarily so. At the end, it balances out.
Well, yes, the, the billing's then are a month behind.
Okay.
At the top of page six is a summary of the Starr County debt as of December thirty-first. The tax note series twenty-fourteen A has a current balance of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. The certificate of obligation two thousand and four is now zero. That was paid off on December the twenty-seventh. Road and bridge fund precinct three has a note payable, an equipment loan payable to KS State Bank with a balance of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, two-ten. The international bridge equipment loan to, from, from, from a company called Revenue Markets. The final payment of that was sent in, in December, and it's now zero. Road and bridge fund precinct four has an equipment loan from Caterpillar Financial Service. It has a balance of forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And it has another equipment loan from CNH Industrial Capital with a balance of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Precinct two has an equipment loan from John Deere Financial with a balance of thirty-two thousand, three oh-six. And precinct one has an equipment loan from Doggett Machinery with a balance of sixty-two thousand, two oh-seven. And our participation with the City of Roma for the international bridge has a balance of one million, two twenty-seven, two seventy-five, making total debt of two million, two seventy-four, oh thirty-two.
Mr. Carter, on the, on the first one, the tax note, the twenty-fourteen A, did you ever get an answer as to whether we could pay it off with the INS?
We can, yes.
We can?
Yes, we can pay it off, and that's, that's in the next paragraph there at the bottom of, at the bottom of page six.
Sorry about that.
The, the, the interest and sinking fund for that loan has a balance of four hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. As compared to the debt amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one forty-two.
Had we passed that through the court to get it paid, or we still haven't done that?
Judge, I've been focused so much on the audit that I have...
I'll put it on the agenda just in case for next meeting.
Yes, I will. I'll put an agenda item on my next meeting to get that done. On page seven, I wanted to let the court know that I'm holding one invoice from the county court at law for, and add light on my attorney fee of four hundred dollars. There's insufficient funds available in the, in the budget for that, for that invoice. I've already had a meeting with the new county court at law judge and explained that to him. And he will be addressing that, and sometime we'll, it's, it's a relatively minor amount, and we'll get that fixed. And then at the bottom of page seven is a list of the additional revenue certified for the county auditor for year, this year, year-to-date through December thirty-first. There was eighteen thousand, eight hundred for the district clerk, twenty-five thousand dollars for the district attorney, four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-eight cents for the law library fund, and then thirty-five thousand dollars for the district attorney. And those have all been budgeted. Questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Carter.
Just can I ask you a favor before you go further? For the sake of the public information, just within your report, within your line or your report, can we know the status of the Arroyo Moreno project, the drainage, the extension of the grant?
Sure. Yeah, under, under my report, I'll go ahead and do that, and that is report on the Los Morenos project. As far as extension, I'll tell you what I know.
Yes, sir. We've been, I've been working there for about a little over three months now. The problem is, Judge, is when, when they do give us the extension, and I've been talking to Maricela about that extension, where can we spend it, how can we spend it? Because we can do a lot of work with the equipment that we have. It's just that the fuel and all, they're in our budget quickly. And to, and to finish that project, or just at least to, to, to a decent level of termination, it's gonna take money. Maricela, how much money was available? She's not here?
The last Commissioners' Court that we had, the Commissioners right now, that's the current money that we have right now.
How much?
For construction was a hundred and four thousand.
And they haven't sent you nothing?
As of right now, but because we, the judge just submitted the paperwork for the new contract. So it might change, we're not sure.
Will, will the monies that we're spending, are they reimbursable to us?
We can't get reimbursed until the audit is complete, but I'm sure we can.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can get the money reimbursed, however, it won't be until the audit is, is complete. Everything is on hold right now. But once, once... Mr. Carter, you want to shed some light on the audit, how's that coming along?
I'm expecting it certainly before month end, anything between now and month end. We're in constant communication with the auditors, so they've asked to clarify a few numbers, and we answered their questions. They're writing their report.
And the thing right now, just with the Arroyo, especially San Julián, it's gone to the point that I'm really committed that I need to cross San Julián road because they're not, they're not seeing what I've done. The, the problem, you can tell, it doesn't take an engineer, it takes common sense, that the problem with the cementera and, and, and the road of San Julián, with that, they'll, they'll get some relief, not a hundred percent, but they'll get some relief because of that. But I'm committed that I have to go across, and it costs money.
Having said that, you know, the mayor, Mayor Escobar from Escobar has talked to you, and then he talked to me about his concerns on, on San Julián. He wants, you know, what's gonna happen to the people downstream of San Julián once we, we let all that water go through? You know, we're, we're, the, the engineers have to be questioned on that. But I think the, the drainage area is big enough so that the people will not get affected. However, we do need to clean the, the Arroyo from eighty-three down to the river. It's got a lot of brush, a lot of debris, and that, of course, dams up some of the runoff. So, you know, we, it's a lot of work. It's not something that the Commissioners can do overnight, but we're working on it, you know, as fast as we can. Hopefully, before the next rainy season starts, it will be fixed to, well, God willing, y'all don't get flooded.
What I can ask, Maricela, and I'm pretty sure Roy is in the same situation, Mr. Carter, you know the, the importance of the audit and the importance of the extension of the project? Because as soon as the audit comes in, make sure you make phone calls so we can get the paperwork for the extension so we can...
Yeah, I have instructed...
So we can spend that money, we have to spend it.
I have instructed...
We are gonna spend it, of course, we have to get with Victor Canales as well pertaining to the paperwork that we need for the condemnation, but, I mean...
Forget the condemnation, let's do what we got.
Of course, we can do anything without the audit.
What I have told Mari is, once the audit comes in and it's approved by the court, to make plans for, if it's early in the morning, that same day, someone needs to drive to Austin and deliver those audits man, in hand. If not, first thing in the following morning, because we, you know, we do need that money to start flowing in.
Thank you, Maricela.
How many of the programs will be, will be able to apply because of the audit? Is there any on the...
Two, we have two applications.
We lost two, two, two grants?
No, we need, we have two, that if the audit is not complete, we'll lose. And right now, we have the TDHCA that's on hold, the contracts are ready, but we, they're asking, they're waiting for the audit.
Mr. Carter, what is the deadline for the audit to be completed by the state of Texas? When is the deadline?
June.
So, for this one?
No, this one is already six months late. Seven months later, right? I mean, it's over six months late now.
So right now, we have four contracts for four homes. If the audit is not complete, we'll lose those four.
Those four, four grants?
Correct, the four contracts.
When is the deadline for that?
It's January thirty-first.
January thirty-first?
Yeah, we also have the CDBG, but that one, we have a little more time.
A little bit more time, yeah. They, the state extended, the, I mean statewide, they extended the application till March. So we're okay on that one. But are the other ones, the tax dot for the nutrition programs and all of that, I mean, we are on hold for all of that.
Fifteen days?
Correct.
Any other question?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mari.
Judge, I have a question, I'm sorry. On the auditor's report, that, that, that obviously is a big, important issue, but we, I couldn't hear. What is the expected date that we should have it available, there is nothing for that?
By the end of the month is what he said.
Oh, okay, I know, I know. And on the condemnation process, I know Victor Canales took off, but without that, I'm not sure what he's asked. What do you know, Judge?
Well, again, on the condemnation, that's to finish out the, the project with a channel. Right now, what we're trying to do is just fix it to where y'all don't get flooded. If we get a four, five inch rain where y'all don't get flooded. There's still a lot to be done on that project. Commissioner Peña is in the midst of negotiating, buying some land to build a, a big retaining pond. You know, so we can bleed it, and the water, we can control the flow that, that will be coming off the hills. But all that is, right now, what we, what we're trying to do is save you from getting your homes flooded again. We'll fix it completely the way it should be, once we, we, well, I'm not going to guarantee, but once we have a pretty good handle that, that, that y'all won't flood with just any rain.
You mean to, Judge, Maricela's not here, she's left, but some of these people, they didn't want to sell. They, they want to sign off. They can, you can use your, it won't be your land, but you can use it.
Mr. Moreno, do you have a status on Efren Ramírez? What does City of Roma says? I haven't been able to contact them, because Chrisando hasn't answered them.
They've been in contact with them, they're still holding the last part of it.
Okay, if I remember, they said they were gonna start by January, full construction, not paperwork.
Correct, but they're still, they're still stacking the last part of it. They're working on it, and they're still trying to plan hopefully to be implemented.
Okay, we also need Efren Ramírez to be working at, at full speed. Because that's gonna, that's gonna alleviate a lot of the water that goes into your territory, because it'll be, it'll be going through Efren Ramírez. So you don't know, you haven't contacted the committee, the new committee that was formed or anything on that, on Efren Ramírez? You'll be, now, let me know, you coming or something, please, look me, let's see, I'm there at the office, so we can get in touch, Coneso. It is very important, Efren Ramírez is very important to the Arroyo Moreno.
The final thing for today, just for today, not the final thing, but for today, the City of Roma right now is, is locating the, right now, they're locating the water line. They're gonna have to lower it so I can go through with the pipes. They're gonna have to lower the water line.
Pero de la de San Julián.
San Julián. And the, and the cable, the phone cable has to be lowered también. So he's gonna, he's gonna back me up in probably a week, or maybe, I hope, no more than a week. They're gonna have to lower the water line and, and the phone line, the phone cable.
I guess what's important, the Commissioners are doing their part, you know, everything they promised, they're doing. Unfortunately, that's the way it is in construction. Things come up as, as you are working. The water line, the phone line, you know, but, but all those are being taken care of.
We appreciate that, that Commissioners, all the work that y'all have been doing on the project.
Any, any other question?
No, sir.
If not, I'll, I'll go ahead and keep on. Let's go back to item number four, claims. Mr. Carter, are they in order?
Yes, Your Honor, the claims have all been reviewed, and they're all in order.
I move the way...
Take it, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. The post. Oppose. Motion carries. What about the new vendors list, Mr. Carter?
Yes, Your Honor, the new vendors, the documentation is also being reviewed and is all in order.
Ten of them, sir.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item seven is an action item, and this is final approval on Los Rancho de La Estrella, Phase Two. Mr. Arcia.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. At this time, I'd like to present the final approval for Rancho de La Estrella, Phase Two. It's on the San Tex Road, on Mr. Alvarez's, uh, foundation.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight, and it's also a plat, and this is, uh, an amended plat of Los Rancho de La Estrella, Phase One.
Uh, yes, Your Commissioner, and this is for, for Phase One on the Rancho de La Estrellas. This one is, it stays, everything's the same, because this is, it has already been approved for final, except that there was a typo, instead of being a share thirty-three, actually, I mean, share thirty-four actually falls under share thirty-three, and that's it.
Just to correct the share number.
Yes, Sir. Just the share number.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Item nine is to accept the lease payment in the amount of a thousand dollars from EcoSite to Precinct Four.
Taken, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item ten is to, to accept the donation of one eighty-five from ANI Electric to the fire department, Precinct Four.
Take it, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eleven is an action item, and this is to deputize Jose Adrián Beliz, Stephanie Guerrero, Liliana Guerrero, Danny Garcia, Lilia Guzmán Rodriguez as deputies for the clerk's office. Mr. Unsull.
Judge and commissioners, um, this is just a formality, as, coming in as a new clerk, we're asking, uh, for your approval to deputize, um, the employees at the county clerk's office that they can sign.
Taken, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Item twelve is an action item, and this is to approve and award the low bidder, uh, to Armin Antonio Solis Construction for the CDBG seventeen, eighteen contract paving project.
We ask that you approve, and this is a contract that we have for CDBG. Uh, we had already advertised it the first time, we have to re-advertise it again with a new, a new bid advertisement.
Moving second to approve, we, but we don't need to re-advertise anymore.
No, no, what's this?
We're going to grant you the project, right?
That is correct.
Okay, I have a motion in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Uh, item thirteen is also to approve a resolution authorizing signatories for seventeen and eighteen for CDBG contract number seven-two-one-seven-four-four-zero.
But that is correct. We're just asking, since we do have a new treasurer, we just have to update, uh, our documentation.
Taken, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item fourteen is to approve opening an account for title SCU operational account for County Attorney's Office.
Judge, what this is, is, um, we're asking to create a new account within my offices to allow the SCU to be able to, uh, delineate what it is that they're spending. Basically, what we have now, we have horses that we're maintaining, and we're, uh, providing for them, uh, equipment, so on and so forth, so that we can go ahead and see what it is that, that we're actually spending on the SCU. I, I don't know, Judge, this may be a question for the auditor's office, but, uh, the last couple times that I've come to Commissioners Court asking for a, uh, opening of a new account, I also submit an attached budget, uh, but it, the budget's not up, they don't allow me to present it to the court. As far as why I can't present it to the court until the week after or the next meeting, I don't understand.
Who doesn't allow?
I'm sorry?
Who doesn't allow?
Uh, the auditor's office. I'm trying to figure that out. We submitted to, we submit both things, and usually we only get the opening of the account. And the last time we tried it, I spoke with the auditor's office, and they told me that we could not until the following meeting, and I don't understand if we pass, right now, if you all pass a creation of this account, it exists, the next agenda item, legally speaking, would be the budget for that account. That, that's just, I'm, I'm just-
What's that, Mr. Carter? Is there a policy that we can do that, or?
Yes, there is, there is a policy, um, and, uh, from my understanding, Mr. Canales is going about it the right way. I, I don't have any objections to what he's doing. I'd be glad to help.
Well, but to, we submitted also the, the budget, but that's not, not for approval yet. We're going to have to come to the next meeting, and it just caused us two weeks' delay in, in whatever POs or anything that, that needs to be netted out.
And why you said you don't approve? We're approved by the Commissioners Court.
Well, that, that's my point.
Well, you have a good point.
Thank you, sir.
The reason why it's, it first has to be, the, the bank has to be open, and we need to put a specific line item of the fund to input the budget. So there's no, there's no fund, I'm going to give you-
But that's just an administrative thing, and this, this is the policy that the board, that the Commissioners Court could do.
Yeah, because, because we've, we've approved things before, pending something. Why couldn't we approve the budget pending the opening of the account?
I mean, it, it just, it creates such a backlog, and I, I actually, I, I get on something, and then other things arise, and I forget. Like, right now, we have an account that we already opened up, and we haven't submitted a budget, we can't draw on it, because I've gotten busy, and I haven't come back to pass the budget with you all.
And this is for feeding horses?
It's one of the things.
You tell the packers, no?
Uh, Commissioner, could we have that on the record?
The packers, the other three, the next, the semana, feed horses.
Okay, that's good. Uh, and that, that's what it is, I'm sorry?
What is, what did this want about?
Uh, it's basically for the, the Special Crimes Unit, uh, we have horses that we're caring for.
Some de carrera.
For-
Horses?
Yes, sir, uh, to allow for rescue whenever somebody goes missing in the brush in, in our area, uh-
They got a mounted unit now.
Yes. Uh, they also can come out in parades and such, but primarily, they're, they're mostly used for, for rescue. I'm sorry?
For parades?
They can be used for that as well. But primarily, they're for, they're, they're primarily for rescue. They're, these are, these are rescue animals.
They said it's a show deal.
No, sir. These, uh, animals are trained, uh, the officers, uh, the two officers that we had, uh, within the SCU are the only officers south, uh, south of San Antonio, actually, maybe including San Antonio as far as Dallas, that, uh, graduated from the course from the, the United States Border Patrol, mounted.
They only, they weren't trained, es como personas en los caminos para que coman.
Yeah, we don't do that.
And where, where, who, where did you get the horses from, or what?
We got them from, uh, the Tex, Texas, it's a shelter. These are sheltered horses.
Osos de Bilan Turas, the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Son de aquel del, del, del Algo County?
No, sir, they're, they're from up north. They're actually rescued, uh, animals, several of these, one of them, we have that had a, a tracheotomy. He still has a hole, or she, he has a hole, uh, but they're animals that were, were actually abandoned and abused, and, and for different reasons.
Who do you housing them?
And we're housing them up at, uh, Jorge's, Jorge Falcón's.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he's been kind enough to allow us to, to be there. Um, they're, they're, it's, we've actually had some, uh, stories in the news, Commissioner. Uh, it's, it's a really nice story. These were animals that were rescued and are being used to rescue people, so. And that's what this, that's what we're asking for this budget.
We need it.
Yeah. So, so, uh-
Where are we on that?
This is basically a sub of my office, Judge, we're not asking for any of them.
Can, Mr. Carter, can he pay for that hay from some other account and then get reimbursed once we get the, the budget approved?
Yes, we think he has.
No, I, I just want to bring it up, the, the, the whole idea, the notion.
Yeah, but it, you should bring both at the same time.
Thank you, Judge.
Well, that's, should you be, I'm bringing both? I don't know whether you, whether you bring both.
Oh, I, I submitted them. They, they didn't allow me to put it on.
They didn't allow you to put it on?
Yeah.
Okay, did, did I ask for?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
I have a, a motion to approve both of them at the same time.
Well, I'd like that, I'd like that, Commissioner, it was not submitted, uh, I, I, we, we can't, because it wasn't on the agenda, but I apologize, I, I, I appreciate it.
They didn't let you put it on the agenda.
The auditor's office.
Huh? Well, who does the agenda, Judge?
It, it, I don't, I look at it when I get here, Commissioner, you know, I don't, whoever wants to put anything, they're welcome.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on this next time, Commissioner.
This is a public meeting, so anyone that wants to put anything, I don't, I don't mind.
I think he should have been given the opportunity to put it on, and it's up to us to deny it or approve it.
Yeah. Essentially, it is.
That, that's the way I look at agendas, you know. Any, any one of you, anyone wants to put something, I don't see it, when I walk in there is when I look at it.
And then we decide if we approve it or not.
Yeah, you may define the whole.
Yeah, essentially, basically, Judge.
I have a motion to approve, is our second? Uh, all in fair, please, aye.